So I'll ask you to light up your mics. Counsel, any questions on agenda items or consent items on the agenda? Seeing none. Any counselor concerns? Counselor Stevens?
No, no, no. I'm going to talk to staff afterwards.
Okay. Counselor West?
I'm turning on my...
You need to light up your mic.
My mic's up. Getting settled. My turn?
Counselor West?
Everybody waiting on me?
Yes.
You hear me? Okay. I have a...I guess some good news, just a quick update. I'm super proud of the citizens throughout the city. After our meeting at work session and you brought up the concerns about the significant amount of money being raised and, because Rob, you've got to make sure you have a good structure. Right after council meeting, I went to the Greens' home with other community leaders and we began to set up a board and organization and a structure. And we have raised north of $30,000 with more funds coming in for the fire relief. And so I'm really proud of that, to see the city rally together. There's still a lot of processing and trauma and all those things that are happening, but to see us kind of heal and come together has been absolutely amazing. Thank you for your advice on that. And then it was all in...we had an attorney donate their time. We created a committee. We created a board. We started to write our...give our first checks today to families and much-needed relief. And as we take...as we move forward, we have more opportunity to do that. So I'm really excited by that. And so thank you for that in the last session. I just wanted to acknowledge that advice. And then I'm happy that we're moving forward and healing as a community. And then I have a quick statement to read about something that was brought to my attention today, and then I'll be done with my concerns. To the people of Wilsonville, in January, the Wilsonville City Council unanimously nominated me to replace Counselor Scott Starr on the Willamette Falls Locks Commission. And over the last four months, I've been waiting to be confirmed by Governor Kate Brown. It's with great disappointment that I must report that not only has my nomination been rejected, but so has the right of our city to choose who represents them on a critical local commission. I attended and engaged in the last commission meeting, but unfortunately, for political reasons, Governor Brown has chosen not to confirm me. As a foster child advocate, it is no secret that during the election cycle, I openly was critical of the governor's failed leadership in taking meaningful action to address Oregon's broken foster care system. The message that the governor is sending is that if you oppose me or bring a different point of view, then I will shut you out of the democratic process. That is petty and vindictive. The lack of local representation on the Locks Commission will leave Wilsonville out of consideration for any input, which would leave core industrial product suppliers without a voice, as a resident, as well as residents who live along our majestic waterway. Our core constituents must be represented. For the good of the city, I urge my fellow council members to put forth a new nominee. Respectfully, Counselor Ben West.
Okay. I feel compelled to make a comment at this point, that this city has a long and much-appreciated collaborative relationship with the administration of this state and that we, as a city, intend to continue that. And Counselor has expressed his personal views, but those are not to be construed as the views of the council or the city as a whole. And I hope that they will not be so construed by anybody else at this point. Other counselor comments? Mr. Cosgrove, were you able to determine whether the process at Willamette Falls Locks is ongoing or what our status is?
There is a request in the pack of tonight, and I was able to confirm with Mark Ott Nod that the funding request is basically 90 percent retroactive to work that's already been done. The county's seeking reimbursement. The uncertainty with the commission is that they were supposed to be done by June 30th, but they haven't gotten to a point where they can make a decision yet, so it may extend. I don't know how much or how much additional money they might request or whether or not our role in that is going to be another two months after the expiration or if it's going to be two years. So that's the aspect that I don't know at this point, but I suspect that the majority of the work has been done and now they're at the point where they're just going to formulate a recommendation. At the last meeting, I think Counselor West attended, he could speak to this too, they're looking hard at the Port of Portland as a logical entity to repair and maintain the locks. So I don't know if he wants to add anything to that or not, but I think that's where they're at right now.
I think it was apparent to everybody in the room that the most logical position, but the locks, who is really non-committal to do anything except bring an opinion, not a lot of solutions. It was like I had been there maybe a half hour before I leaned over to Mark and was like, why is this not a locks issue? And we all pay into the locks and we don't see a lot in our county from the Locks Commission in development and reinvestment. So it just makes sense. This makes sense to repair it, keep it local, and it makes sense for the Port of Portland to participate in that. We came up with a really creative idea that they seemed to like, where we would ask the locks to do less than a penny raise on their portion of the property tax increase. And they weren't happy with that at all, but it would be, I mean, miniscule, basically no raise at all, but it would allow probably to fund a large portion of the locks. They didn't like doing that or participating in taking it over, so they're having to get creative. And it sounded like they would have to extend this commission out. When we spoke to the person at the governor's office, that kind of seemed to be the vibe that they weren't done, and there was still a lot of indecisiveness on how to move forward.
So the question for counsel is, is there someone among you who can, has the time and the flexibility in your schedule to commit to this? One of the alternatives I told the mayor about today on the phone was the potential of just having staff just sit in the audience, monitor, and if it feels like this is going to drag on for another two years, we could come back to you in three to four months and say, maybe we should consider one of you to put your name in and go through that background check and all that stuff.
I think that's a viable proposal. I mean, if this is in fact winding down, it's within a few months, then staff could monitor and bring that information to us and also could then alert us, as you say, you know, if it does look like it's going to be an extended process where we really want to participate in the discussion and have a voice at that table. Counselor Leah?
Well, I'm...I was recently appointed to, you know, to the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, so I now sit on that board in Oregon City, quite a number of whom are on the Locks Commission. So I also get the information from the others, from the Willamette Falls group, but I'm just completely overextended. And before we...when we even talk about who's going to do these things, what's the time commitment? How many times a month? How many hours of a meeting is involved? Because I'm on at least eight or nine state and regional commissions or committees, and I can't even find time for...where they're not colliding with each other for their meeting times, half the time. So it's, you know, it's getting really tricky for me.
Yes.
It's not that it's not an area I have a lot of knowledge about and I know most of the people there and all, but I don't know. How often do they meet? Once a month?
It's quarterly. Ish, yeah, but it can...you're talking about adding additional meetings. And I'm willing, since I have nothing extra, I'm implying you guys have taken things outside the council, I'm willing to trade or to say, hey, take this because I'm not going to stay on as the nominee, and then to maybe help in another area, so to take some of that burden away if somebody's interested in this. I'm willing to be flexible that way and help.
Well, would the council be okay with taking a couple of months for, you know, staff to assess?
To consider.
And, you know, for us all to kind of, you know, see how this might sort out and not make an urgent, you know, reappointment right this minute? Is that acceptable to the council? Counselor Akron?
I don't know. Yeah, I would agree that we...it might not need to be decided tonight in order to make that decision, kind of looking at what the timeline would be, but...and then also just the basic logistics, what are the next meeting dates that are planned for the calendar year? Things like that, so that we can take a look.
We'll know a lot more after, I think, the next meeting about the work plan, if any, going forward, or if they're just going to make a recommendation to the governor. I think one of the things that I've been hearing through the grapevine is Port of Portland might not like the idea, but it's the committee's decision and they may forward that recommendation to the governor, whether the port likes it or not. So that's what I'm hearing kind of behind the scenes, so.
Well, wouldn't you expect there will be a Locks Commission going on and on?
It's possible.
Because of...because the Port of Portland is not very representative of most of the communities that are involved in the locks.
Right, along the river, yeah.
But will it be a governor's committee? Because I think she's looking for something very specific, which is a recommendation to her office, and then once that's done, I'm assuming that that would transition to more of like a regional...
Maybe a regional thing, yeah. It'll be something.
It will.
They talked about special district being set up. They've talked about some other, like Marine Board maybe taking it on potentially. I'll place the Port of Portland, but yeah, so they do it.
All right.
We'll think.
Any other counselor concerns?
So we will monitor and we'll read back information if we feel like a recommendation is we need one of you. Conversely, I think it could be someone outside of the city council. If there's somebody in the community that we think would be a good representative of the city, we can explore that route too. I'm sensitive for the fact that you all have jobs, you all have busy lives, and many of you are involved in outside committees and commissions and liaisons to other things, so I get that. So we're not trying to add burden to your plate.
Okay. Sounds good. No other concerns then? Why don't we jump then to our scheduled items, starting with Public Works Police Seismic Upgrade Update.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Dolora Kerber, Public Works Director. So here to talk about the project that has not yet been and won't be for a while. And where it is, is the Police Public Works Seismic Retrofit Building was a project that we were working with the State of Oregon to have a grant to do a seismic retrofit of the building we're in. There is legislation requiring any of the first responders' buildings to be set to a category four, which is immediate reoccupancy. Since we occupy that space with the police, we were able to get a proportional grant of the total amount of this project. So we moved forward with...we were awarded a grant by the Oregon Business Alliance, and we were moving forward with design. And then this year, in February, March, we went out to bid and we did a 30-day bid period. We had three onsite tours and we did a pre-bid meeting. We had three potential primes looking at it. It was all looking pretty well, and then we opened our bids. And the bids were 103 percent of our estimate, so double what it was that we had expected it to be. We talked about it internally, about that that was a bit of a surprise, and so we had determined that we were going to go ahead and not do that project this year, return the money, the grant money we'd received so far, which actually was around maybe 12,000, 14,000, because we've only got a proportional reimbursement of design work to date, and that we will wait. And this fall, if they reissue funds, we will reapply for a grant now that we know what our expected bid price would be, so.
By bid, you mean the one bid we got?
The one...excuse me, yes. And so all of that, we ended up with one bid. And what we did, they were very gracious. The bidder met with us, and so we could debrief a little bit about why they felt, or, you know, what was the thought process behind the numbers that they came up with? You know, they talked about how the market's super hot and it's a very challenging project, and so the margins aren't all that great, that they were getting some unexpected high prices from their subs to do the work. And basically, the work is...it's a masonry building, and they're doing a lot of strut tying up in the rafters of the top floor, and then they're having to rebuild the columns in the southeast-west corner of the building. And so, I mean, they have to take out these full exterior columns and put in huge hoodings, and so it was a lot of, you know, intense work at that location. So that's where we are. So in case anybody was wondering what was happening with that project, is we are going to delay it, and hopefully we'll get better bids next year and be able to go to construction.
Can we bid off-season?
Yes, yes.
I mean, we're right in the middle of coming into the peak season here.
And we did talk to them about that, and they suggested that we, you know, look, put it out to bid like February, or well, actually, the timeline that we did, but sometime between November and February, they said, are your best chances for a nice bid.
Yeah, yeah. That would make sense to me.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks.
Charbonneau, emergency outfall repair.
Evening. Mayor Knapp, counselors? My presentation here.
Remind me of your name.
My name is Matt Palmer. I'm with the Engineering Department.
Thank you.
I manage this emergency project for our department. So just as a reminder, this project occurred in Charbonneau. It's on the north side of French Prairie Road. It occurred within a 20-foot easement, and it drains generally the northeast quadrant of Charbonneau. And just as a reminder, this was...it was part of the French Prairie Phase II Utility Rehab Project, and we were doing preliminary work prior to the initial slide that occurred. And I was just going to step through the series of events in case anybody forgot how we got to this point. So we were notified at the very beginning of January of the initial slide by a nearby property owner. We declared emergency January 4th, and we started construction January 14th. So these are the first few photos of construction started. If you remember, we had to mobilize across the existing tennis court there on a French Prairie there. So four days into construction, we actually had a secondary slide on the project. We had a large rainstorm occur that day or that evening, which is quite an issue. They actually had an excavator down below that slide. They actually nearly lost their excavator off the side of the...off the site there. There's a waterfall down at the bottom of the site. Luckily, they didn't lose it. They spent approximately four days cleaning the site and clearing their excavator there. Then they spent approximately the next month cleaning and excavating and putting the new pipe there, and we got final completion on March 13th. So this is what it looked like when I toured the site with the property owner on January 2nd, and this is the final part there on February 25th. And I have a lot of photos, but we thought it would be better if we just played this video. And just to let you know, we didn't pay the contractor to create this. They just paid for it themselves as kind of a marketing tool. Oh. Enjoy the music, too.
It's a very nice drone.
So project cost. So as I said, in the fall, we were actually already doing preliminary design work for a portion of this project, because this is tied to the French Prairie Phase II. So the $46,000 for the survey design, that's already tied to a lot of other work we were already doing. Construction costs came out to $424,000. That's higher than we anticipated, partly due to the slide, the secondary slide that occurred. And then site restoration, which is still ongoing right now. I'm still working on doing landscape restoration with the property owner and actually doing painting of their tennis court wall. Hope to get that done in the next month or so. And then if you have any questions, I can answer them for you right now.
Counselor Stevens?
I have two questions. So you brought in that rock, the riprap?
Mm-hmm.
All that rock? Okay. And also, it looked like there were stairs put in, or was that just so the construction workers could get up and down without sliding down the mud?
There's actually existing stairs down to that area, and we were going to have the contractor reinstall them, and we deferred to not have them...reinstall them. We were actually looking at possibly reinstalling them with our own crews, but that decision hasn't been made yet.
Okay. So a homeowner put those in, and you were going to reinstall them for the homeowner? Because are they allowed on...I don't think stairs like were allowed on the Willamette River Greenway, like that? Are they?
Well, I don't know if they are. I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, then, yeah. Okay. Okay. That's all.
Counselor West?
How are the neighbors and the homeowners in that affected area?
Need to use our mics to get on the recording.
How are they? How are the neighbors in that affected area? How are they doing? And how are they feeling about the project itself that are directly impacted by it?
They were very supportive. The neighbor to the east was very supportive. He was out there most days watching us work, and everybody was very happy with the final product.
Counselor Stevens?
So, I mean, we've had...have some history of this happening. It happened over in River Green.
Yeah, I can think of at least three outfalls that have cost us half a million bucks or more each because they failed as originally built.
Right. And Charbonneau lost access to its marina for, you know, didn't repair it for five years because...couldn't get to the dock because of a slide there. The cottonwood went down and it was bad. So is there any way for us to assess the...Patty's coming up. The bang. I mean, I know it's hard because it's raining, it's mud, and it's a river that's flowing high right now.
It's Oregon.
It's Oregon.
Hi, Patty Nelson. As I mentioned with the council before, we're aware that this apparently has happened before. I'm trying to get a student intern on board, and we have in the budget, you'll see like a mini-outfall study, and it'll be a collaboration with Public Works, but it'll be really focused on the outfalls, and our first priority is to make sure that we've inventoried all of them, that we know where they all are. And then we've identified some of the risk factors, you know, that would lead to issues like this. So trying to categorize it in terms of risk and then make sure we have good information on condition assessment. So in this case, we did have some information going into the Charbonneau plan, but it was dated, so, you know, we want to make sure we have current information. So if things change, which in this case it did, the pipe was crushed, which we didn't think it was before, that we know that and that we can plan to get the investigations done earlier so that we could be aware of them and plan for the outfall work in the summer, not in the winter.
When it's raining and sliding again.
Yeah, so that's the plan, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The other concern is, I know we've rebuilt at least a couple more than once, and so how confident are we that we are engineering and designing so that we're not going to have to rebuild again? You know, we're not going to have another washout of similar proportions? You know, are we at the mercy of nature, or do we have a pretty strong basis for thinking that what we're doing is going to be more durable than what previously was?
I'm not familiar with the past projects that failed. If you're implying that it was something that we had rehabbed and it failed afterwards, I would have to...
It was Maury's.
Oh, Maury's Landing.
And it was a...I don't know if it was a failure or if it's just the design.
Didn't prove adequate to the job.
Right. Because of the amount of water flowing through there, I think, would be the issue.
So I can't speak to that. What I can tell you is that in my prior job, I worked in stormwater, and I specifically worked with outfalls and culverts and, you know, a lot of this type of work, so I have a lot of background in this. So I think moving forward, that will be, you know, an asset. I kind of know what things to look for and where the risks are, so hopefully that will help.
Yeah, I think it could, and I appreciate that background. Keeping in mind, as we do survey, to be thinking about the adequacy of what's there, you know, just not what, you know, what's there, but kind of evaluating, well, is that going to do it or is that going to be at risk in the long run? As we look at outfalls, isn't important.
That's definitely something. In fact, with this outfall, I'll just be frank, you know, one of the concerns is, you know, you don't want to put corrugated pipe back in. That's what we have. That's not what you build with. We were kind of forced to do it for a couple...for a few reasons on this case, but I feel okay with that because we're going back in and we're lining the pipe. And the way that we line them, it'll become a kind of a new pipe inside of that corrugated pipe, so it will be suitable to last long term. So we are looking at those things.
So how much of this is related to the...that these older developments have much less detention?
Well, you used to...that's the key question, I think, is that they used to just say, just channel and pipe everything.
Pipe it right on.
Now we don't do that.
No. So newer places like Philpott have got detention and...
On-site.
Overflow detention and basketball courts that fill up. If you...you know, we've got detention all over the place.
I think you've nailed the key issue on the older ones.
But in places like Charbonneau, there's...they don't have those kind of detention structures, certainly Maury's Landing doesn't.
So each situation will be different. In this case, you know, usually do detention if the receiving water body is sensitive to those changes in the hydrology. The Willamette River isn't as sensitive to that. But then where you discharge the water onto the slope, that's a critical component. So one option is to take the discharges all the way down to the river, which actually a lot of the permitting agencies, surprisingly, I think with the Willamette Outfall, want us to do that. So with...Steve Adams has the Willamette Outfall Projects that are currently out to bid, and that's exactly what, working with permitting agencies, they're having to do, which is extending the pipe all the way down to the water. So you're not dumping the water, you know, down the slope and eroding it, so.
It's kind of funny, though, because with Park at Maryfield, they...the first phase, they dumped it right in Arrowhead Creek, and by the time they got to like the second or third phase, they were dumping it way away from the creek and putting in rock, and it was going into a wetland before it got to the creek, because that was the new way. And now we're going back to, we're going to dump it directly in...
I know. So there's two things, you know, it's water quality, so there's...
Click fashion.
There's going to be things to do for water quality, and then there's also going to be the energy dissipation, and how you dissipate the energy, you can do it a variety of ways, right?
That was what...why they put all those boulders there where the outfall was, but it was still, you know, 40 yards away from the stream.
So I don't know if you noticed with this outfall, we were actually very fortunate. There's...it's called Trapdale Formation. It's like a hardened cemented rock...
Right.
...which creates kind of a waterfall there. That allowed us actually to have the outfall still in above, you know, on that, because we know it's not going to erode anymore. It also allowed us to do the work without getting into the...they call it in-water, into the water, which triggers a bunch of permits and obviously a lot more costly to do. So we're actually fortunate on this one, but.
Great.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we've got about half an hour to do our last item here. Counselor...
Town center plan adoption, or at least recommended that we adopt.
Correct.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp, councilors. My name is Miranda Bateshall, Planning Director with the City of Wilsonville. Um, thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, we have ordinance 835 on tonight's agenda for a public hearing. At that time, we will go through the main presentation that will outline, um, the history of the project, uh, and the key points in that plan. Uh, so tonight in work session, we just have a short presentation to highlight a few of the changes since we last saw you and went through this package of information with you of the plan, its appendices, and the implementing ordinances. Um, so as you'll remember, you had a work session on this, um, it was, I believe, late February. And you gave us some of your last recommendations. And so we're gonna walk through those with you today just to point out what was integrated into the plan. And so I just would like to introduce Alex Dupey, who's project manager and lead over at MIG. Um, and he'll go ahead and take it from here.
Uh, thank, excuse me, thank you, Miranda. Thank you for having us back in again tonight. Um, so we just have a couple slides to talk about some of the primary changes. As Miranda, um, said, we'll go through the plan in more depth as a part of the hearing at about 7 o'clock. Uh, so I wanted to, to step through some of the changes based on the, this conversation we had back in February. Uh, some of these changes are to the plan itself as a part of the implementation strategy. Other changes are to the code, the development code as part of Appendix A of the plan. Uh, but there were a few specific items that you, you discussed with us and asked for some, some changes or some, a little bit more information about in the plan. And these are just a few that we, uh, have addressed as a part of that. The first is discussing how urban forestry, uh, will be a part of the overall plan and implementation. Uh, we are aware that the city is doing a larger urban forestry plan, uh, but we've added some coordination language within the plan itself to make sure that within town center, uh, those trees are counted and the methodology is, is complete for assessing those trees as we move into future development. And that includes trees within parking areas, but also, you know, street trees, other trees within town center, uh, that, you know, may be significant or have some type of amenity that, that could support future development. So we've made that change within the plan itself. Uh, the other question was not so much about implementation, but how parking structures are accommodated within urban development in other areas. So we've added some examples, uh, for how parking structure has been, has become a part of existing development, whether that's through partnerships, how they're funded, um, how other jurisdictions have successfully partnered with developers to, um, to construct those. And so that was included within the parking section of the draft plan. And then finally, um, adding some more guidance on how public art is selected. Uh, we've added some language within the development code itself, um, but also added some plan language as well in getting to a little bit more specific, specificity in, you know, how public art is selected, the scale, the size, where it should be located to provide a little more guidance, um, as that, as that starts to come in. So not major changes, but definitely changes to provide, you know, a little bit more direction for each of the, the major plan elements. Uh, from the development code standpoint, as I said, we did add a bit on, uh, public art as a part of that, that process, uh, you know, what, what would be required there. Primarily, though, um, the changes to the code came from the Planning Commission hearing of, um, last month. And for the most part, the code itself was, um, you know, readily supported with the exception of some question around the waivers process. Um, you know, how does that actually work, you know, in the real world? Would the city get what they needed out of that, um, if that, if that was the process? And, um, Miranda, as a part of the, of your packet, Arata 2, just here, um, outlines some of the changes to the waivers. And if you remember, remember from when we first started talking about this, um, the waivers process is primarily for the mixed-use and the commercial mixed-use districts where, um, if a developer wanted to come in and had a good reason to build a single-story structure as opposed to a two-story structure, or wanted to build more square footage, that would be, than what's allowed in the code now, um, should there be a process to be able to review that, provided that there's some benefit to the community, um, as a result of that development? So we developed this waiver process to, to provide, um, the city some, some leverage, but it's also the developer to, to, um, have some flexibility in how they develop their site. So with the waivers process and on Planning Commission, um, we had a long conversation with Planning Commission on how to draft this language, essentially breaking up the waiver process into two buckets. And to meet the waivers, you would need to select one of the waiver category, one of the waivers out of each category. And in the Arata, it's primarily on menu one, which is more building-focused, I would say. Um, you know, are you providing affordable housing? What is the building type? How is it, how is it set within the area? Is there a community amenity, like a public space? Um, we heard a lot from the community about community gathering spaces. Is that something that a, that a landowner or developer would be able to provide within that building? So provide some flexibility there. Um, the other piece and another something that they would have to select which one they would want to choose is off of menu two. And I'd say that's more of a placemaking or environmental consideration. Should the building be lead or, you know, could the building be lead certified? Um, which could be rainwater harvesting, more sustainable systems. Are there specific placemaking elements that would be a part of that, that would be above and beyond what the existing design guidelines already have for, for town center? So it could be plaza space, it could be public art, um, it could be slightly more, let's say nuanced, uh, street frontage. So those are the types of things that are, you know, already within the code to some degree, but what the waivers process would provide that higher level of, of scrutiny if somebody were to come in and, and request something that's not necessarily permitted within, within the code itself. And I want to stress, this is just for the commercial mixed-use and the mixed-use districts. This does not apply to the Main Street District, uh, which we've heard loud and clear, you know, should be pretty strict in, in the types of uses and development that it, that it provides, requires. So those are the primary changes with, within the code from, from Planning Commission.
Is one item from menu one and one item from menu two adequate to deliver what we're hoping to see?
We believe so. Um, a lot of the direction that we had from the Planning Commission was actually, initially it said, I believe, choose three from this menu of 10. And they were concerned that somebody might just pick the lowest of the three or three that maybe aren't even interrelated. Um, and they really wanted to try to hone in on, if we're essentially allowing this building type, which isn't what we want outright, but we understand we want to provide some flexibility, um, what we want to get back is some enhanced design or placemaking that helps to address some of what's being taken away, which is, for lack of a better term, they used the coziness factor. Um, and so they really talked about what is that balance that helps to give, sort of address, um, that design, that placemaking, that community aspect. And so that's what sort of clustered these two into two buckets. And we think that the way that they're arranged, you really get, um, things that address, essentially mitigate, um, kind of what is, what you're not necessarily getting straightforward out of that design initially, um, but will make them bring forward a project that won't sort of create those negative design aspects that you didn't want to have.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that there was that level of thoughtful discussion in reaching this protocol. Uh, we know from experience that when we write code, we think we know what we mean and what we're gonna get, but you discover, you know, next year or five years down the road that someone else reads it and gets an entirely, you know, maybe different message out of that. And so it's, uh, an ongoing challenge to try to convey in writing what we, what we think we mean. So, we still should try.
Yes.
And so, and so with those changes, um, Planning Commission did recommend adoption of the plan with the resolution, LP 1903. Uh, this was a great conversation with Planning Commission. We spent probably two hours of the two and a half hours discussing this on, on the waiver process. Uh, we thought we were gonna get out early. We didn't. Um, but I, I think this is something that definitely provides a higher bar, particularly if there is somebody who comes in and they, they want to do something that's, that's different than what, what we've talked about in, in the past, but still provides some flexibility on that, so.
I like that structure because I remember years ago, really my first year on council, sorry, first year on council, where, um, there was a lot of discussion at council and Planning Commission about DRB and waivers and, you know, lots of exceptions. And it speaks to what you were talking about, how challenging it is to write good code so that you, you have enough flexibility, yet you have enough rigidity, for lack of a better word, so that you have good design. And so it sounds like the Planning Commission did a really good job at finding a compromise so that there's flexibility, that you get something back for that, for those waivers. And it's written into the code.
Yeah.
As opposed to, well, we're just finding, you know, what we use, what they used to do is just allow for a waiver.
Yeah.
You know, because it made sense to enough of the DRB members that they wanted to...
Subjectively, yeah.
It was very subjective.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that was challenging for a lot of people because then your code becomes meaningless. So, you, yeah, you were on DRB, I don't know if you experienced that. So, I, I think that's a great idea.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Maybe.
You've got more to go?
I'm not sure. I can't remember. No.
Okay, all right.
So, so with that, uh, we do have our first, our first reading, um, in about half an hour or so. And then, uh, May 6th, as, as long as everything goes well tonight, um, we're expecting a second reading on May, on May 6th for that.
Okay. Questions, council? Observations?
The only, if I may, uh, add one more thing, uh, is that there were a few, um, very minor cleanup, um, changes. And I'd like to present to you a page two Arata sheet for ordinance 835, um, as presented today, which is April 15th, 2019. Um, and so this just outlines, um, a few very minor text changes that are non-substantive in nature, um, but just provide slightly more clarity in the text document. Um, and these will be, also be at the dais downstairs for you, but I want to provide them now.
Okay, and so you'll mention these in the formal meeting?
I will.
And then if we have a motion, we should be clear that we're including these latest wording changes. Councilor Stevens.
Has, has Planning Commission, has this been post-Planning Commission meeting?
That was post, that is post-Planning Commission. Um, there was a final review, um, by the principal at MIG and there were just a few clarifications that we felt...
Nothing policy or substantive.
There's nothing policy, there's nothing substantive. These are very minor, but...
Better language.
Yes.
Yeah, better, better...
Cleaner language.
Yeah, yeah.
That's more accurate to what...
So it doesn't change anything that...
No.
No, it doesn't.
There's no, no policy involved.
Okay.
Looks like that mostly covers it for now.
All right. No additional questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cosgrove, anything for...
I could give you the update on the meeting I had with Detective for Clockman County.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay, so it was, uh, there's nothing new to add. He just, uh, basically told me that they have sent several samples off to the Fire Marshal's lab, that ATF is still involved. So everybody that was engaged initially is still engaged and, uh, they should be getting test results back from the lab to determine whether there was an accelerant used. Um, they should be getting those back hopefully by the end of this week and as they learn more, they will keep me in the loop.
All right, I think that's helpful. I know that rumors get started easily in the community and I'd rather have information released as early as we're able to do so.
And you may have heard about something related to a person driving a Jeep.
Yes.
They did follow up on that and, uh, they interviewed that person. How they tracked all this stuff down is amazing to me. But, uh, they did talk to the person and there, there's no further follow-up with this individual.
Okay, that's good.
And they're still examining a lot of video, he said, so that, uh, there's a lot of multiple investigatory techniques being used.
Okay, good. All right, anything else? If not, uh, let's call us out of work session at 6:42 and we'll reconvene downstairs at 7:00.